We call this meeting a town council meeting, November 8th to order. Roll call, Betsy?
Councillors Flax, Antipas, Maravzik, Morton, Knoll, and Watson. So Peresati, Grimm called me and said he couldn't be there. Deb's working also.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know where councillor Murray is.
Diane sent a message, she has a bad back.
Oh dear, okay.
Yeah, not good.
There it is then.
So.
You have a forum anyway.
Yes, we do. Chief Petty Officer James Crane, is he here? Can you lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Recognitions, awards, and memorials, we have two. The first is a proclamation honoring the 2017 Navy Chief Petty Officers and Selectees, and it will be presented to Chief Petty Officer James Crane. We're going to have Captain Knoll present. Is she Navy?
Do we need an autograph? Proclamation honoring the 2017 Navy Chief Petty Officers and Selectees. Whereas upon completion of the community service projects at the Quonix Claims Park, the Veterans Memorial, the Senior Center, and the Groton Public Library, the Groton Town Council wishes to convey sincere appreciation to the 2017 Navy Chief Petty Officers and Selectees under direction of Command Master Chief Ron Clark for their dedicated service to the town of Groton and the citizens of this great town. And whereas the town of Groton is the home of the USS Nautilus, birthplace of the U.S. Submarine Force, and home to the shipyard that builds the best submarines in the world, giving Groton a proud role in the stellar reputation of the 2017 Navy Chief Petty Officers and Selectees. And whereas on August 12th, 2017, this dedicated group of hard-working Navy Chief Petty Officers and Selectees spent many hours making improvements by installing a rope barrier, power washing, weeding, mulching, painting, and staining at these Groton landmarks and facilities, now therefore be resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Groton, on behalf of the citizens of Groton, does hereby extend our appreciation to the 2017 Navy Chief Petty Officers and Selectees in recognition for all that they have done for our local community as well as serving our great country. Dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 8th day of May, signed by Mayor Flax. Congratulations.
Congratulations, ma'am.
It was after golf, tournament.
We have another proclamation recognizing Bill Stanley, and I know that dinner for Bill is tonight. It's happening right now. And I think I'll read this one. It's a proclamation honoring the 2017 -- oh, that's the wrong one. Recognizing William Bill Stanley. Whereas Bill Stanley, Vice President of Development and Community Relations for Lawrenson Memorial Hospital, Yale, New Haven Health, has been selected as a 2017 recipient of the William Crawford Distinguished Service Award. And whereas the William Crawford Distinguished Service Award is presented periodically to outstanding individuals who exemplify the spirit of service to one's neighbors and who have contributed to improving the quality of life in eastern Connecticut. And whereas the award is named for William Crawford, General Manager of Southeastern Connecticut Broadcast Corporation, who became well-known for generating community interest through the programming at his station. And whereas Bill has been selected for this award because of his numerous accomplishments, including his service as Commissioner of the New London Development Corporation for six years, chairing the Eastern Connecticut Heart Walk for five years raising over $900,000, as a longtime member of the New London Rotary Club, serving on the United Way of Southeastern Connecticut Campaign Cabinet for 12 years, and as campaign chair for one year, and currently on the Three Rivers Community College Foundation Board of Directors. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council, on behalf of the citizens of the town of Groton, congratulates Bill Stanley for receiving the William Crawford Distinguished Service Award in recognition of his continued commitment to improving the lives of citizens throughout eastern Connecticut, dated this 8th day of November 2017. So we're going to jump to the Police Union Collective Bargaining Agreement 2017-0199 because our town attorney has somewhere to be. So we're going to try to get this out of the way relatively quickly.
Respectfully, it's to go to that dinner to provide Mr. Stanley with his award.
For Bill Stanley's dinner. There you go. So we -- is this an executive session? This is an exec -- I'm sorry? Yeah. That was a -- thanks. There you go. Thank you. I hereby move that the members of the Town Council Committee of the Whole, along with Town Manager John Burt, Human Resources Director Bob Zagami, and Town Attorney Eileen Doogan go into executive session to discuss strategy and/or negotiations with respect to collective bargaining with one or more bargaining units. This action is taken without prejudice to the council's right to discuss these matters under private meeting pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-200 (2). I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Just wondering, John, so we're -- because this is a normal council meeting, but I don't ever recall going to executive session in a regular council meeting. But this is to just -- we're going to get updated on the --
The status of the negotiations and the status of the --
Okay. What are you saying, Harry?
Yeah, we've done it before, but it's been a long time.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. We're going to go to executive session. We'll leave. Everyone can stay. Right, we're back from executive session. So we're going to go to 2017-0199 Police Union Collective Bargain Agreement. I'd like to move for the suspension of Town Council Rule 7B to consider and act upon 2017-0199, the Police Union Collective Bargain Agreement. A second? Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are -- have suspended the rules. Harry, could you do 2017-0199? Ooh, you need it, I'm sorry. There you go.
Okay. This is a resolution approving tentative agreement between the town of Groton and the Groton Police Union Local 3428, Council Number Four, Ask Me AFL-CIO July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2019. Whereas the town of Groton and the Groton Police Union Local 3428, Council Number Four, Ask Me AFL-CIO, reached a tentative agreement on a successor collective bargaining agreement for the term July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2020. Whereas the providing bargaining unit membership voted to ratify the agreement, and approval is recommended by the town's negotiators. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Groton, the Groton Town Council hereby approves the agreement and the expenditure of funds necessary to implement the agreement between the town of Groton and the Groton Police Union Local 3428, Council Four, Ask Me AFL-CIO, July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2020. I so move.
We have a motion and a second. Thanks, Harry. Any other discussion?
Talk about why we're doing this.
Why we're suspending -- why we're --
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to let the public know why we were suspending the rules. We've been working on this union contract for a long time, and instead of waiting to go to a cow, the attorney recommended we just vote on it tonight.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed to extension? That passes 6 to 0 to 0. Thank you. We're going to go back now to receive citizen petitions. Betsy, are there any buddies signed up?
Oh.
This is the portion of the council agenda where the council welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, thank you, submit written statements -- written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councils will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizen petitions portion of the town council meeting. Citizens should make their presentation from the lectern and state their name and addresses for the record. First person signed up is Jim Furlong.
Good evening. My name is Jim Furlong. I live at 57 Fish Town Lane in Mystic. I'd like to take my less than five minutes to appeal to the council to suspend the scheduled vote on merging zoning and planning commissions. Much has happened since the council's spirited public hearing on merger last June. I hope that the anxieties that ran high last summer have eased somewhat. Since then, the zoning commission's rewrite of regulations for the Water Resources Protection District went into effect smoothly on August 1st. The new regs better protect the town's drinking water while respecting property rights. The council wisely decided to allow the zoning commission to complete its rewrite of remaining regulations. The public hearing on the rewrite now is scheduled for November of next year. A merger is set for early January of 2019. Other changes that have taken place. Groton no longer is threatened by potential loss of $17.5 million in state funds, thanks in large part to the work of our Hartford representatives. Electric Boat has won a $5.1 billion contract. EverSource is extending natural gas lines up Fort Hill and beyond. We've got new state traffic signs, increasing pedestrian safety and walkability. And of course, we had an election yesterday that will bring in new councillors. Now, I suggest would be a good time to pause and consider whether we really want to abolish the zoning commission, which has done many good things for the town. You've read that the commission in 1965 denied an application for condos on 49 acres of Haley Farm. That decision led to the farm becoming a treasured state park. Here's another instance of the zoning commission protecting our back. In the late 1990s, a company applied to begin a massive mining and zone-crushing operation on a hill northwest of the transfer station. Noise, dust, and blast effects would have had enormous negative effects on houses, wells, and water flowing in the area. The company twice submitted and rejected -- submitted and withdrew its applications and finally dropped the project. That area is now a hiker's paradise. It's beautiful with a winter view of Long Island Sound, spectacular rock formations, and a rare pitch pine forest. It enhances Groton's reputation and its quality of life. As to business impacts of the zoning commission, the commission is committed to making it work for business. One example, not many years ago, loudspeakers playing music at a downtown Mystic restaurant patio caused residents to complain. The commission advised the restaurant to target patio tables rather than to broadcast the music far and wide. The restaurant installed a good system, problem solved. Nine years ago, the zoning commission went its own way when the then-town planning director sought to prevent Realtors from displaying signs. The commission amended the regulations to allow signs, for example, for open houses under guidelines, and again, business benefited. I ask that tonight's vote be put off to allow the new council to make its own decision. We may well find in 2018 that the new regulations would be administered best by the separate zoning commission that wrote them, rather than by an overworked combined unit that can't attract volunteers or find the time to pay attention to details that matter. Thank you both for your consideration and for the hard volunteer work that you put in as Town of Groton councillors. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Gresham?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Town Councils. My name is Amy Gresham. I live at 45 West Main Street in Mystic. And I'm asking tonight that the Town Council consider a noise ordinance for the town of Groton. I live in close proximity to Chapter 1. Since they moved in, Chapter 1 has been playing music excessively loud into the late hours of the night, in particular on Mondays and Saturdays for some reason. It is particularly harsh during the warm weather as they open their street-facing windows and the noise blasts out into downtown. There have been numerous calls to the police. I have a list of calls in the last six months. The Groton Town Police have been wonderful in their response, but they say they cannot do anything to enforce the peace and quiet as there is no noise ordinance downtown. Chapter 1 has also said with their lawyers that they can play their music as loud as they like. The chief of police has spoken to them about the noise, and as have some members of the Chamber of Commerce. So I ask for the Town Council to talk with the local downtown residents and the downtown police officers on duty at night about what's going on. Other Connecticut towns have noise ordinance, and they include Fairfield, Mansfield, Greenwich, Norwood, the town of Rocky Hill, and Stonington, actually. The state of Connecticut also has a noise ordinance. I'm as pro-small business as they come, but I don't think excessive noise is necessary for business success. As downtown is a mix of commercial and residential property, I ask in fairness that a noise ordinance be considered and adopted by the Town Council. Thank you for your work and for your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Marty Pollard?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marty Pollard. I reside at 44 Overlook Road in Gales Ferry. Tonight, I stand before you as a Groton employee of over 20 years in the capacity of the GMEA Union President. And tonight, I'm putting forth a motion to discuss for the cost of living adjustment for our retirees. As you know, it was presented a couple of years before the council. It looked like it was going through, and then it was passed for only one person at that time. I have some letters that I'd like to submit from some retirees in request of that as well. One of the reasons that was given for the denial at that time was that there was no written request. We put in a written request each year to HR so that it was not presented to the council at that time. It was presented to our HR at that time. So tonight, I am speaking on their behalf and looking to open up that discussion. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Hoffman?
Good evening. My name is Catherine Hoffman. I live at 21 Indigo Street in Mystic. I am both a Groton resident and a town employee. I am also a member of the GMEA, and I've been asked to read a few of the letters that our retirees have sent in, looking for assistance on that 2% COLA increase. The first one I have is from Linda Stankewich. It says, "I have had no increase to my pension since the day I retired. Because I have continued to supplement my medical insurance coverage with the town, which is constantly rising, I effectively have lost ground, and I'm in support of a 2% COLA increase to retirees as a group, not just as an individual who may request an increase. Thank you, Linda Stankewich. I am writing the Town of Groton Council to approve a cost of living increase for my GMEA pension. I retired after 30 years of work with the Public Works Department and depend on my pension as my income. It has been 10 years since the last cost of living increase of 2% was granted, and living expenses have increased at a greater rate since then. I thank you and the Town Council for consideration of this request. Linda Martin." I am interested in receiving a COLA as I'm on a fixed income and have not seen an increase in years. Inflation has hit me hard. With no increase in social security, I am actually going backwards in keeping up with my prices of commodities. Please add my name, as I dedicated myself to the town of Groton for 27 years. Arthur Nichols. And the last one I have. I am seeking a 2% cost of living adjustment per the GMEA Pension Amendment Agreement. My retirement date was December of 1999, and I have only received one pay increase in almost 18 years. The 2% now wouldn't begin to cover the cost of living increase during that time, but it would certainly help. And I am open to attending a Town Council meeting if necessary. Meredith Coat. So I thank you for looking at this and putting this on the agenda, perhaps, for a 2% COLA for our employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Horace Newberry?
Hello. I'm a longtime retiree now, but the 2% would be really --
Horace, can you just give your address, please?
Oh, Horace Newberry, 279 Thames Street, Groton.
Thank you.
And my pension is a significant, if not the majority, but it is an important part of my living capabilities, and the 2% I think is fair, and I would appreciate it if we could get that. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Johnson?
Larry Johnson, 115 Ridgewood Drive, Mystic. Let's see, I've been retired a little over 20 years. And any raise would certainly be appreciated because of the general increases in cost of living and so forth. And 2% would be really appreciated in that sense, too. So it'd be really nice if we could receive that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Palmer?
Sue Palmer, right?
Sue Palmer.
Okay. Hi. My name is Sue Palmer. I live at 35 Saunders Drive, Westerly, Rhode Island. I'm here on behalf of the GMEA. I'm a 32-year employee of the Town of Groton, and I am reading some letters that we receive from our retirees because I'm looking at my future, and I don't want to have to come begging for money. I'm 94 -- I'm a 94-year-old retiree of the Town of Groton, living on a fixed income in Florida. My husband is deceased, and the cost of living has continued to increase, making it a hardship at times, affording basic necessities. The recent hurricane Irma has also taken a toll on my finances. It would be greatly appreciated if a cost of living adjustment is granted on my behalf. Sincerely, Beatrice Miller." This next letter is from Victor City, who was a 25-year employee of the town. He ran our IT department. "I'm seeking a cost of living increase of 2% per the GMEA Pension Amendment Agreement. It has been 10 years since an increase was last granted. I hope the Town Council recognizes the appropriateness to honor this agreement in light of the 10 years that have transpired since the last increase." The next letter is from Renata Schneider, who worked at the library for many, many years. "As a Town of Groton retiree of many years ago, I urge you to grant us a cost of living increase since the last one was 10 years ago. In the meantime, costs have increased significantly, especially for medical, car and house maintenance, and other areas. It is ever more difficult for us seniors to make ends meet, especially as illness sets in. An increase in our monthly checks would be greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Renee Schneider." And the last letter I have is from Diane Del Grasso. "Dear Town of Groton, I'm writing to request approval of the proposal for a 2% cost of living adjustment for all retirees of the Town of Groton. Retirees face many increased costs of living, health care, real estate taxes, car and home insurance, food, medicine, and utilities, and these costs continue to rise each year. My husband lost his non-qualified retirement benefits for five years when the company he retired from filed for bankruptcy. That was a $2,000 a month loss of income. Please consider this small increase for your retirees. Kind regards, Diane Del Grasso." Thank you, and please consider this for us.
Thank you. Thomas Potter?
Thomas Potter, 154 Walker Hill Road. You all have a copy of a letter dated November 8, 2017. I wrote this letter last Saturday. Who would have known at the time that some events have transpired that significantly change what I'm going to say tonight? And primarily, that's because only one of you will be back next month. That may be good news for some, that may be bad news for others. I voted yesterday. The mayor and I have exchanged some rather nasty emails over the years. There's one subject that's really been bothering me, and that's why has the town literally, literally, lost millions, not just thousands, millions of dollars in revenue that they could have easily collected under a fee-for-services contract with the owner of Navy Housing. The documents you have in front of you will clearly show facts that I obtained under a Freedom of Information Act request, and that's assuming that your former town manager turned over everything concerning this subject, Navy Housing. There are towns located in Rhode Island next door, Middletown, Newport, they have agreements with this company or its successor company, where they recoup cost of services like police protection, fire protection, ambulance service. The town was given an opportunity back in 2004, and you have a copy of the email and the proposed draft in front of you, that offered to sit down with the town manager and negotiate a fee-for-service contract. And my question is, why did that never occur? This town threw money at illegal review. Typical approach, $23,000 in legal fees, only to come up with the conclusion that you can't tax the housing, can't tax it. Nobody cares if you can tax it or not. If you can collect a fee for service that represents the cost of fire, police, and ambulance service, what's the difference? Whether you call it a fee for service or you call it an assessment based on the, you know, assessed value of the property. That's ridiculous. So I'm asking this Town Council, whatever's left of it, to direct the town manager to begin looking into a negotiation with the present owner, Belfour Beatty, to start collecting the costs that the town incurs for providing police, fire, and ambulance service to residents and Navy housing. Belfour Beatty can afford it. They've got some 27,000 housing units under various agreements with the Department of Defense that are worth $300 billion. Billion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jean-Claude Embry?
Groton, as well as this Charter Revision Commission. So I would implore you sincerely to oppose any vote that you may take on the Charter Revision Commission coming up in this lame duck session. Thank you.
Thank you. Gretchen Chipparini?
Gretchen Chipparini, eighty-seven Phoenix Drive. Quote, "Truth seeks and finds the light of day," unquote. You lost not because Democrats were so good, you lost because you failed to listen to the heartbeat of Groton. That's been getting weaker and weaker for a long time, and you ignored it. The diseases we have been playing with was a town manager who stayed far too long and cared more about getting to retirement than about the fiscal health of our town. The theft from our citizens from the corporate deadbeats, just mentioned, Balfour Beatty, Oddfellows Home in Sun City, and the shameful Noank Public School Guardians, which were all used as pawns at our citizens' expense by Senator Summers, as she also used this Town Council to fulfill her own political ambitions when running for Lieutenant Governor and State Senator. At the same time, you had no problem raising our taxes thirteen percent in the past two years, which we will see if you give back seven point eight percent of it after the state's new budget provided little harm to Groton. We have lost over fifty businesses in Groton. I've counted, and I'm sure there's more. And eight thousand citizens, and you have had no sense of urgency to this very serious problem. You think the way Mr. Calley's statue faces is more important than getting jobs and places to shop and things to do so that we can convince the many coming to work here at Electric Boat to consider Groton their home or a place to spend their money? You refuse to go to bid for our town attorney, if not only to keep them honest. Our town attorneys wrote the most pathetic option agreement for William Sealy School property that I have seen in my professional career. They also gave an opinion about Balfour Beatty paying their fair share of taxes, resulting in nothing for us but a big fat bill. Why, five other towns in Rhode Island, Maine, did not pay thousands in town attorney fees and instead are now collecting thousands from Balfour Beatty, and I'm sure there are more. You completely ignored the William Sealy School neighborhood that simply asked you to prohibit cars from going through their quiet neighborhood. We had no problem protecting the twenty-three gardeners in Noank, while hurting forty thousand of the rest of us. Mr. Mayor Flax, you have told me many times that I should feel privileged to receive a phone call from you, while, Mr. Mayor, you should feel privileged to serve as your mayor. Tell me, who is the winner in any of this? Not the citizens of Groton, which is why you lost so devastatingly. You failed to listen to truth. Some of you obviously don't even understand them. And that person's not even, oh, yes, he's here, Harry. And yesterday, the truth found the light of day, I hope. I am going to warn the Democrats, you're sitting back there, some of you, and one right there. You suffered just as devastating a defeat two years ago as our Cleveland's have now. Your previous council is much, not much better than this council in tackling the tough issues that I just addressed. I hope and pray that one of you parties finally gets it, as obviously Harry Watson's did not with his comment, quote, "I don't know what the voters are trying to tell us." It is simple. The people want a Town Council who listens to them, who cares about their future and their money, who pays attention to them and finds, or minimally works on solutions to the big problems, and does not use their money to help you or your colleagues in Hartford to win future elections. I predict that the Democratic majority, who just won, does not begin by choosing a new and capable person as our mayor, that they may suffer the same defeat yet again and waste another two years. The onus is on them to have a crack at it. Let us citizens watch how they do, and I hope we do not have the same election landslide two years from now, because that would mean little progress will have been made by them, as has occurred in the past two years with this council. Our town is what suffers the most. Thank you very much.
Marvin Shaw?
Hello, my name is Marvin Shaw. I live at two eighty-one Flanders Road in Groton. I started with the town. I'm here on the GMEA for our, maybe a little increase that we could have in our pension. I started with the town in nineteen seventy-eight, and through my years of twenty years with the town, I was the president of the United Steelworkers once, and then I get into the GMEA as a Public Works Foreman, as an Equipment Maintenance Foreman. And since that, I've had one pay increase in my pension, and I don't have to tell you people, I don't have to push the issue that cost of living is skyrocketing out of sight. You go down by groceries, you buy anything, automobile, gasoline, everything. I looked up in the computer back in nineteen ninety-nine what the price of things was. I couldn't believe it. But anyway, someday, you're going to be facing maybe these same deals. So if you could see a way of giving us a little bit of increase, sure, sure would be appreciated, you know, for the, for the, I got a wife, hmm, well, whatever. And as you know, the gas heating oil is up on us. Yes, dear. I'll be sleeping on the couch tonight. Okay. As you know, the gas heating oil, taxes, and medication for my wife's, insurances, medication, and all of that stuff is all taking a big increase. And if you could see a way of giving us something, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the last person who signed up. Would anybody else like to speak, citizen petitions? All right. We now have response to citizens petitions. Karen?
Yes, I would like to say something to all of the people that spoke on behalf of the GMEA. This is precisely why I requested a standing referral about a month ago, I think, to address the issue of COLAs for all of the bargaining groups. I feel very strongly that the town gets years and years of faithful service from the people who work for Groton, and these employees are given, or promises are made to employees that, once you walk out the door and you've retired, there'll be a waiting period, you won't get anything, but that after, I believe it's five years, then the town will look at your pension benefit every other year and consider whether or not you get an increase. It's not guaranteed, but the promise is made that it will be looked at in a draft. And to my knowledge, that has not been done, it's never been done on a regular basis, and certainly has not been done in probably more than a decade. I think it's something that we need, the town needs to start doing on an annual basis. It should be automatic. The city of Groton has an automatic program where every year, all of their retirees are entitled to a pension equivalent to whatever Social Security gets. It's an automatic thing. It should be automatic here. So I would like to, hopefully, the new incoming council will address the issue.
I respect, thank you for taking the time to take what I have to say. Citizens petitions are for the citizens, and responses to citizens petitions are only for clarification of something that a citizen may have asked, and if the Town Council makes a referral, I think maybe you should put your stuff in writing, because it's excellent, to submit.
Okay, I will do that.
Dean?
I had a lot of choice things to say. I'll hold my tongue. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Would anyone like to move the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
The motion and second any discussion? Seeing that others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That passes six to zero to zero. Communications and reports. Rich?
Yeah, last month, I went to the sale meeting, the monthly meeting, and I also went to the seat, the monthly meeting with seat, and the full meeting with the Groton Longtime Commission down there.
Okay, thank you. Bonnie?
I went to the Downtown Mystic Merchants fundraiser a couple of Tuesdays ago. That was to raise money for the victims of Puerto Rico.
Thank you. Harry?
Two things. I attended the Park and Recreation Commission meeting, I believe it was the second Wednesday of the month, but I'm not sure, in October, and I also went to the Groton Food, what is the Groton, the meals that we, the meals, Groton Community Meals fundraiser last weekend at the Elks Club. It was a soupathon, and I think they raised quite a bit of money. So that's all I, all I have.
Thank you. Dean?
One item. I attended the, on October nineteenth, I'm a member of the Representative Advisory Board of the Southeastern Connecticut Water Authority, and we had our quarterly meeting then, and I think that's about it.
Karen?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. I have nothing to report either. So Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting?
Thank you, Mary. The councilor canceled their meeting, was scheduled for this evening. They didn't have any business besides their rules that they have, they were going to change the rules, but since there's a new RTM, they felt that, they knew RTM could do that. So their next meeting is scheduled for December thirteenth, seven thirty PM, at the Groton Senior Center, and they may choose to have a special meeting prior to that. If the ordinance passes this evening, they have a timeline to veto, so the moderator is aware of the timing.
Okay. Clerk of the council?
I have a letter that I think you received, and actually, it's really due for minutes, but I'm going to get it in now, because I never can do it with the minutes. The consent calendar goes so fast. So the, it was from Mr. Potter, and it was referencing the October nineteenth conversation with the town attorney, and he wanted to ask more to explain what was meant from Councilor Antipas, when he stated the following about code of ethics for the Town of Groton. Quote, "The Town Council took the advice from our town attorney and decided that there was more, be more mischief involved than it would be worth." And he asked for clarification of what that meant, and that was in the minutes. And the election went smoothly. We got the results without any hitch. We had two hundred absentee ballots.
Do you know how many people voted, totally?
I do.
Great.
I brought all that information for you. We had a twenty-five percent turnout with a total of, oh, of, total of, where's my total? Total of? Four thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven.
Thank you. Tom Andrew?
Good evening. Want a reminder that the town offices will be closed this Friday in accordance of Veterans' Day. The human, at the Groton Human Services Building, they're providing Thanksgiving food baskets to over five hundred Groton families. If you can donate things like frozen turkeys, canned fruits, canned vegetables, that sort of thing, you can drop them off by November sixteenth at Groton Human Services, two Fort Hill Road. We had brought up the ambulance building, it's been up a couple of times, just to let you know, I just got the list of needed repairs there, we're looking through them, and we're still waiting for the attorney to review the new update at least, so we are on that though, working on that. And then, just, do you mind if I address something brought up by the-
No, please go ahead.
The noise ordinance, the, just to start with, they're supposed to have, first of all, a special permit for the music and that type of thing, which I haven't pulled, and it has been referred to our attorney, and I'll be working with them to try to force compliance. So it is on my radar, and I am working on it. And then, just to mention Balfour Beatty, we've actually just, we've had a couple of meetings internally discussing options on that, just had one Monday morning-
Great.
-was the last time, so that is on my radar, too.
Appreciate you following through. Anything else, Sean?
That's all I have.
Okay. One thing I do want to say is that we did, there was an election yesterday, and there are, excuse me, eight new councilors coming in, along with Rich, and we still have a few meetings left, so that's it. But I want to say that, I know that, Rachel, you're here. If anybody, you know, has any questions, or we can help in any way, I'm sure we're happy to help, so if, but please reach out if you need to. Congratulations to all the Democratic candidates, so worked hard. Committee reports, Harry?
Yes. The Personnel Appointments Committee met on October third, and we met again tonight. I'll highlight what happened on the third. We interviewed three people for the Permanent School Building Committee. It's a committee that we really need to get the slots full, because there's a lot of work to be done for the 2020. There was a fourth person who could not come that night, and we only had, essentially, we only had three slots, so we interviewed three people, and we took no action. And then, people that were recommended and are on our agenda tonight are Barbara Nagy for the Library Board, David McBride for Community Development Advisory Committee, Andrew Turman for the Justice House Committee, and we had a couple of folks coming in from Park and Rec Commission, because there's been a lot of discussion about a proposed Little League tournament in the Town of Groton, and where the information was heard and originated. The two gentlemen, Jonathan Grossman and Jeff Zuliani, were here. They claimed that they did not get information from Park and Recs, and they actually reached out to Amanda Waterford. They said within hours of when they heard when the tournament was going to be handed out of Waterford to another town. They also said, I had a copy of what they're proposing for a Little League tournament next year, which somebody had forwarded to me, and they assured me that this had been talked about at their Little League Board, and had been approved by the Little League Board, and we adjourned before seven thirty. I didn't get the time, so I wrote down before seven thirty, and I'll hand these minutes into the time clock.
Thank you. Senator Harry?
That's it?
That's it?
That's it, yeah, I'm sorry.
Dean, any rules?
No rules committed.
And the committee, the whole met, and we have several items that we're discussing The first item is twenty seventeen zero zero seven five disposition of William Sealy School property. Dean?
Sure. Twenty seventeen zero zero five, resolution authorizing contracts concerning the William Sealy School property. Whereas the Town of Groton has been pursuing the redevelopment of the William Sealy School property on Walker Hill Road, and whereas the Town Council has determined the best option to develop the property would be to work with a commercial real estate broker to market the property in conjunction with several adjacent properties, and whereas the town manager has a draft contract with Pinpoint Commercial Real Estate to market the property for a flat fee of seventy thousand dollars or commission of ten percent of the actual sales price, which- and where the information was heard and originated. And the two gentlemen, Jonathan Grossman and Jeff Zulliani, were here. They claimed that they did not get information from Park and Recs, and they actually reached out to Amanda Waterford. They said within hours of when they heard when the tournament was going to be handed out of Waterford to another town. They also said, I had a copy of what they're proposing for a Little League Tournament next year, which somebody had forwarded to me. And they assured me that this had been talked about at their Little League Board, and had been approved by the Little League Board. And we adjourned before 7:30. I didn't get the time, so I wrote down before 7:30. And I'll hand these minutes into the time clock.
Thank you. Senator Harry?
That's it?
That's it?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Dean? Any rules?
No rules committed.
And the committee, the whole met, and we have several items that we're discussing The first item is 2017-0075 disposition of William Sealy School property. Dean?
Sure. 2017-005, resolution authorizing contracts concerning the William Sealy School property. Whereas the town of Groton has been pursuing the redevelopment of the William Sealy School property on Walk Hill Road. And whereas the town council has determined the best option to develop the property would be to work with a commercial real estate broker to market the property in conjunction with several adjacent properties. And whereas the town manager has a draft contract with Pinpoint Commercial Real Estate to market the property for a flat fee of $70,000 or commission of 10% of the actual sales price, which ever is greater in addition to other incentives, only payable upon closing on the sale of the property. And whereas the town council has also determined that the efforts to market this property will require the creation of multiple conceptual plans. And whereas the town manager has a draft agreement with Nelson Edwards Company Architects, LLC, to create the necessary conceptual plans at a cost of $12,750, now therefore be it resolved, the town council authorizes the town manager to enter into agreements with both Pinpoint Commercial Real Estate and with Nelson Edwards Company Architects. And be further resolved that the funds to pay for the Nelson Edwards contract shall come from an anticipated salary savings, $11,700, within the Planning and Development Department, and $1,050 from CIP 50106 5868, also known as the Market Excess Town Properties. And I so move. Second.
We have a motion and a second and any discussion? I just want to say, I have issue with, I think it's detrimental to the town to be partnering with Gretchen, and having her be the, like, I think it's hard to do business. But I'm happy that Lisa is representing both of us. But I'm hoping that you represent the both of us, and looking for some kind of insurance that neither the town or Gretchen will get involved until it gets to the point where they need to get involved. Sure. We can go over to lectern if you want.
I speak pretty loud.
Okay. Well, people will be able to hear you at home if you go to lectern.
Yes, in discussions with John Burt, your town manager, as well as Mr. Reiner and Paige Bronk, your town planner and your economic development. This is why the structure, and especially as a broker, the structure of having independent agreements where I represent the town independently, I represent Gretchen independently, as well as I'm in discussions to represent additional property owners in those areas. Those individual representations are confidential between those parties. What I will work to do as a broker is be able to market them as one assemblage, so that one's not contingent upon another. They are independent listing agreements. But the ability to be able to market them together as an assembled development is what I think the advantage of bringing a broker into that situation would be.
And so, you'd be the face of the negotiations. It wouldn't go down to Gretchen or to our town until it was?
Each individual negotiation would be separate, yes. And it would be at the point where, and a developer comes forward and says, okay, these are the parties that I would want to, the parcels that I would want to include in a development, this is what I'm looking to do, and I would go to each of the individual owners. Those negotiations are all separate and independent.
Okay. Any others have any questions? John?
I just wanted to point out, various as far as moving forward with this, I think it has a possibility of producing a lot of tax revenue if things were successful, so.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That passes six to zero to zero. Next up is Karen, can you do 2017-0172?
Yes. Adoption of ordinance to designate the Planning Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission as the Planning and Zoning Commission and to abolish the Zoning Commission. Adoption of an ordinance to designate the Planning Commission as the Planning and Zoning Commission for the town of Groton and to abolish the Zoning Commission, be it or day by the town of Groton that one. Although the Planning and Zoning Commissions have provided the townspeople of the town of Groton consistently exemplary service, changing economic and other conditions, including the increased uncertainty of the state of Connecticut's ability to provide revenues to the municipalities, have caused the town council to reconsider the utility of having two separate commissions. Information obtained by the town council strongly indicates that it would be in the town's best interest to create a combined planning and zoning commission in order to, among other things, unify and expedite the process of obtaining zoning approvals and thus encourage economic development. Two, pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-4A, the Planning Commission is hereby designated as the Planning and Zoning Commission for the town of Groton, and said Planning and Zoning Commission shall have all powers granted to Planning Commissions, Zoning Commissions, and Planning and Zoning Commission by the laws of the state of Connecticut, including, without limitation, the powers granted Planning and Zoning Commissions by Chapters 124 and 126 of the Connecticut General Statutes. Three, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall consist of seven regular members and three alternates, all of whom shall serve five-year terms, and each of whom shall be a resident elector of the town and appointed by a majority vote of the town council. The present terms of office of the five regular and three alternate members of the Planning Commission, including any currently vacant seats, shall continue until their current expiration date. Thereafter, the town council shall appoint regular and alternate members for terms of five years. The terms of the two additional seats for regular members created hereby shall terminate on December 31, 2021, and shall thereafter be filled for five years. No regular or alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission may concurrently be a regular or alternate member of the town of Groton Zoning Board of Appeals. Four, alternate members shall have all powers and duties conferred on alternate members of the Planning and Zoning Commission by the General Statutes. Alternates shall be designated to act according to a regular rotation process, so as to ensure, to the extent practicable, equal participation by each in the affairs of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Five, the town council shall by majority vote fill all vacancies of the current and alternate members of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the unexpired portion of any term. Six, the Zoning Commission shall be abolished and shall cease to exist, and the Planning Commission shall become the Planning and Zoning Commission on the earlier of January 4th, 2019, or 45 days after the day on which written certification is given by the Director of the Office of Planning and Development Services to the town council and town clerk, that the comprehensive rewrite of the zoning regulations pending before the Zoning Commission on the date of passage of this ordinance by the town council has been adopted by the Zoning Commission. As of the date on which the Zoning Commission is abolished, hereunder, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall have jurisdiction over all applications, referrals, and other matters of any kind pending before the Zoning Commission and the Planning Commission. This ordinance shall be effective 45 days after enactment by the council unless vetoed by the RTM. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Harry?
Yeah, item number five, I just, in reading this, it says the town council shall by majority vote fill all vacancies of regular and alternate members. I'm not sure that's really right. I mean, don't we need five votes to pass something? And if it says a majority, and there's six councillors here, four does not do that.
Well, you need six for a quorum, and almost all of our business requires at least five votes.
Right, but this just says a majority.
All votes.
Right. Right, I'm just, I'm just thinking this thing through. So, if we have six here, technically, a majority would be four, which would violate the rules. I mean, you could rewrite this to have it conform with our rules.
I don't want to pick it up before.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I say leave it like it is, and they have to follow the rules when they do stuff, so.
Okay.
Well, it's the charter that dictates, sorry, it's the charter that dictates your quorum and affirmative votes on any ordinance resolution or vote, except vote for adjournment.
Like here tonight, we have to vote five in favor, doesn't matter how many are here. You may get an eight here, but five passes.
Well, you have to have a quorum of six.
Right, right. Obviously. Okay, thank you.
Things pass have to be by five.
And it has to pass by five.
Right. Well, how about this? Trying to think of my amendments here. I move to amend the proposed text, paragraph five.
I'm sorry.
Let's see. Town council shall by majority vote fill all vacancies. Would, shall by a vote of at least five work?
Affirmative.
Affirmative vote, five affirmative votes.
Correct.
Do you have the text down? And I'm just reading this off the top of my head.
Yep.
Does it look like a cogent, intelligent amendment?
It does.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I, read it back, please.
The town council shall by affirmative vote of five, fill all vacancies of the regular and alternate members of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the unexpired portion of any term.
Should say at least five, yes. Well, now I'm being picky.
You're being picky.
Right.
Affirmative of five is five.
So, can you read it back, please?
The town council shall by affirmative vote of five, fill any vacancy of the regular and alternate members of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the unexpired portion of any term.
You propose that amendment?
I move that amendment.
My second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on change? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That passes six to zero, zero. With regards to this, I know there's been some people?
So, now you need to approve the ordinance as amended.
That's the motion.
Right, but we're not voting on it yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said?
Gotcha. There's some people who came in and spoke tonight about, about holding off on passing it. I'm for passing it, I believe. John, our Planning and Zoning is for passing it, the Groton Business Association's for passing it, I think you're for passing it. Are you for passing it?
No.
Okay. I don't want to put words in your mouth.
The non-voting member.
I think it's good for the town, it's good for business, and there's time to straighten everything out. Dean?
I've heard a couple of times, both tonight and other days, it's been brought up as follows, that the Zoning Commission in the past has done good things. And this may be too fine a point. The purpose of the Zoning Commission, after it adopts zoning regulations, is to follow those regulations and process applications against those regulations. That is the good thing that it does. The reason why I worry about that is that I overheard a colleague of mine at a dinner one night said, boy, I'd love to be a federal judge, because when you're a federal judge, you can do good things. It's not your job, it's a temptation. Your job is to do justice. The good would come from that one. It's like I said, it's a fine point. I would view the Zoning Commission, or Planning and Zoning Commission, its job would be to follow the regulations. Because otherwise, an applicant has to worry about whether they're on the side of good or not, as defined by maybe the current. Predictability within the regulations is what we seek, as long as they follow the regulations, whether it's zoning, planning, wetlands, everything. That is the good thing itself. Just thought I'd take the opportunity to make that comment.
Thank you. Anything else? So, Betsy, I think we need a roll call vote?
Yes, sir.
So, will you do that?
Are you ready?
Should we have to move it as amended?
Well, there's, we've made the motion.
Yeah.
Right?
So, you're calling the vote as amended, is what he's doing. He's calling the vote as amended.
All the voters amended.
Right. So, all those in favor of the amended ordinance. Antipas?
No.
Flax?
Yes.
Moravsek?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
Nalt?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Thank you. What's that? Five to one?
We have?
Five, one.
You're killing me.
Five in favor, one opposed.
So, that passes?
Yeah.
Thank you. Rich, you want your 2017-0222? You don't have to read all the dates, you just say what they, you know.
Adoption of 2018 Town Council regular meeting schedule. Be it resolved that the town council hereby approves the town council regular meeting schedule for 2018 as followed, the first Tuesday of the month, except for in November, when it would be on a Wednesday. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and any discussion? Seeing that all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That passes six to zero to zero. Bonnie, can you do 0223?
Adoption of 2018 Committee of the Regular, whole, Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting Schedule. Resolution approving 2018 Town Council Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting Schedule. Be it resolved that the town council hereby approves the Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting Schedule for, in 2018, as follows. It's the second and the fourth Tuesday of every month, except in December, when it will be December 26, 2018. But who's going to go, who's going to want to go to a meeting the day after Christmas?
Not our problem.
All right, so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing that all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That passes six to zero to zero. Harry, 2017-0224?
Okay. It's a resolution approving 2018 Town Council Personnel Appointments Committee regular meeting schedule, which is the first Tuesday of every month, except for November, where it is on a Wednesday on the 7th. All meetings to be held at 6:30, Room 1, Town Hall Annex. I've already said, the first Tuesday of the month, except as noted. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing that all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That passes six to zero to zero. 2017-0228, interlocal agreement for regional community enhancement task force modifications. Whereas on June 6, 2017, in Resolution 2017-0115, the town council authorized former town manager Mark R. Alfinger to enter into an interlocal agreement with the cities of Groton and New London, and the towns of Ledger, Stonington, and Waterford for participation in the regional community enhancement task force. And whereas the town of East Line has expressed a desire to participate in the agreement, now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes town manager John Burt to enter into a modified interlocal agreement with the cities of Groton and New London and the town of Ledger, Stonington, Waterford, and East Line for participation in the regional community enhancement task force. I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing that all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That passes six to zero to zero. Dean, can you do 0229?
It's the shortest one.
Yeah, well, you deserve it.
2017-0229, modification of 30th Town Council rules to provide for communications and reports from department heads. I see now. Resolve that Rule 7, also known as Order of Business Agenda, the rules of procedure to govern the 30th Town Council is hereby amended, for all the good little do, effective upon adoption as follows. Subsection A, under Roman numeral 7, communications reports, other than committee reports, add subsection E, department heads. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and any discussion? Seeing that all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That passes six to zero to zero. Karen, 0230?
Resolution authorizing a $7,500 cost share for the tax increment financing TIF district master plans within the city of Groton. Whereas the town of Groton has been working on a tax increment finance policy, and whereas the town council has contracted to have two TIF district master plans created for the areas near Route 117 and 184 intersection, also known as Groton Center Village, and for the Route 1 slash downtown Groton area. And whereas the city of Groton has budgeted $15,000 to contract for two TIF district master plans for the Thames River Road area and for the Five Corners area. And whereas the town wishes to financially partner with the city in a spirit of municipal collaboration by paying for 50% of the cost of the two plans, now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes a transfer of $7,500 from the general fund contingency account 107415499 to account 104605290, for the purpose of paying for 50% of the cost of the creation of the TIF district master plans for Thames Street and Five Corners in the city of Groton. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, sorry, any discussion? Seeing that all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That passes six to zero to zero. Rich, can you do 2017-0231?
Let me do that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Harry, why don't you do one together?
Because I was going to propose moving 0231 through 0234 as a group. And they would be appointment of Barbara Nagy to the Library Board, appointment of Richard Fitzgerald to the Zoning Board of Appeals, appointment of David McBride to the Community Development Advisory Committee, and reappointment of Andrew German to the Jabez Smith Committee. I would like to move them collectively as a group.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That passes six to zero to zero. You wanna do the Thames, Thames, whatever, I'll do it. 0235, resolution authorizing a ten thousand dollar donation to the Thames River Heritage Park water taxi program. Whereas the town of Groton has received a request from the Thames River Heritage Park Foundation to continue its support by joining the city of Groton, the city of New London, in donating ten thousand each for the water program during the next fiscal year, twenty nineteen. And whereas the town council recognizes that the water taxi season falls in both fiscal year twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, and whereas ten thousand was budgeted in function one thousand one for legislative, economic, community development, and other initiatives, now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes a ten thousand dollar donation to the Thames River Heritage Park Foundation in June twenty eighteen from account ten zero one seven fifty-two thirty for the Thames River Heritage Park winter water taxi program. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes.
I got a lot of, um, comments at, on election day about this issue. And, uh, quite a few of the citizens did not think that we should be paying for this. So, I might vote against it because of that. I, I do see the merit of it when the submarine museum opens and the coast guard museum opens, but right now, I don't really see the.
Yeah, I've received, I've received at least one time a question on it, and I think part of the, part of the reason the question comes up is because people think water taxi, they may not have heard about the larger project. And the water taxi is, in essence, two questions. One, does it make any money? Two, if it makes money, why not privatize the thing? It's not meant, as you know, it's not meant as a standalone. It's meant as something, it's a component of a larger plan, which if it ever came into fruition, would be a wonderful thing. But the taxi had to kind of be there first. And, uh, rather than have a public employee running it, it's sort of, as you know, it's been bit out. And I think maybe people don't, don't get that one. What you're addressing, though, is interesting, which is the timing. And as I said, I, I have talked to other people on this, and we understand that it's sort of a lost leader. But you're saying that the timing may be off, that it should be a component, you understand it's a component, but not quite yet.
Well, I mean, you take the water taxi from New London over to Groton, and there's not much there.
Right.
When they open up, we got the money for the, the Nautilus, then they could go from there. And then eventually, if the coast guard gets built, that, that's gonna be a fantastic, and it's a, gonna be, the whole park is the water, the river, everything, on both sides of the river, but.
Do we, I know we just, we talked about it before, and part of this too, I think we forget about this, part of this too was the city of Groton had already said, "We'll put in ten thousand," and the city of New London said, "We'll put in ten thousand." Especially because the city said, "We'll put in ten thousand," we'd look like schnooks if we didn't do something that looked like we were cooperating with the city.
Right.
Going in with the city on something. Isn't that what people ask for very often? And, you know, if it was a hundred thousand dollars, that's something that you give a lot more pause to. This is almost at the level, even though ten thousand's a lot of money for us, a gesture. John, what about the timing of this thing? I mean, could this thing be, if you know, could this thing be put off till another year?
I think they'd have trouble operating through the season. The problem is, now that you're involved in it, I don't know if you want to jeopardize the ongoing operations. And we, but just to point out, we have the money budgeted, it just didn't, uh, get designated exactly as that, it was, the intent was for that, and this is really just saying, "Hey, this is for this, the money's there."
Yeah, I mean, we'd already talked about this, so it's not something you can sort of throttle up, throttle down.
Right.
Yeah, like a electric train. Okay.
Rich.
Uh, Karen, did you want to?
Rich has a comment.
We've previously made a commitment to the water taxi, so I think we're just following up on this.
Yeah, this is like a second time, yeah.
I, I think it's an obligation that we have.
Yeah.
Two things. One is, you're right, I mean, it's, it's the city of Groton, town of Groton, and New London, and I think it's important that we keep those relationships going, and, um, it's not, you know, people often want to see us cooperating, and I think it's good for the region, we're doing it with TRIP, with CT Next, and, uh, and we're partners, and I think that it's important to carry on in this particular instance. I did notice that the city, um, in their, in their meeting last night, voted on ten thousand as well, but it was for fiscal year twenty eighteen. And I know that we're looking at it, John, for twenty nineteen, we already paid for twenty eighteen.
Right.
So I just would have the city check and make sure they're not paying twice in the same year, maybe they want to bump it to twenty nineteen, I don't know. But, if they're watching.
And we took a good look at our timing, just because it looked odd the way our timing was.
Yeah. Yeah.
One thing maybe we could do is look into the, um, the Port Authority funding, the port that is paying for the dock.
I wouldn't be surprised if they're, they're involved in, in other ways. I'm gonna get Harry, I have the budget.
Might look at putting in a request to have them fund this.
I mean, they're trying to do a lot of interesting things with the water taxi. They have like, um, they're trying to get special boats out and have, um, like, interesting talks about the history on the banks, and they're involving, um, a lot of different things that actually will bleed over into the Groton sale, and, uh, because of the banks of the Thames. And so it's, um, you know, there's a lot of things connecting it, and I think it's important for us to be involved.
I, I just think we need to be, keep investing in it. Have you ever been to Baltimore Harbor? They have a, a great taxi around. Baltimore Harbor's just beautiful. I mean, uh, if we don't keep investing in this, it's not a lot of money, ten thousand dollars. The potential of this triangle between New London, Groton, and the Nautilus is, 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 it's a tremendous tourist attraction. I think so. That's it.
Thank you.
I just brought it up, because there were a lot of comments.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that passes six to zero to zero. Rich, can you do, um, oh-two-three-seven?
Two zero one seven zero two three seven, Groton Education Foundation Grant Library. Resolution authorizing the town manager or his designate to seek grant funding from the Groton Education Foundation Incorporated to benefit the children and the senior community of Groton in association with Groton Public Library's Book Buddies intergenerational program. Whereas the children and seniors of Groton will benefit from the Book Buddies program, which will include literacy-based enrichment activities between fifth grade students of the Mary Morrison Elementary School, ages ten to eleven, and residents of the local area nursing and assistant living facility of Groton Regency and Fairview Oddfellows Home. Whereas the Groton Public Library, through its monthly Book Buddies program, will support literacy, intergenerational enrichment activities, and community collaboration. Whereas the Groton Education Foundation Incorporated has funds available to provide and enhance these literacy-based enrichment activities and library materials in support of education youths ages ten to eleven, supporting senior of Groton and strengthening community partnerships. Resolve that the town of Groton Town Council hereby authorizes the town manager or his designate to seek grant funding in the amount of one thousand dollars from the Groton Education Foundation Incorporated, which will utilize by the Groton Public Library to benefit the Book Buddies intergenerational programming for children and seniors in Groton community. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing that all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that passes six to zero to zero. Bonnie, can you do zero-two-three-eight?
Sure, mayor. Uh, twenty seventeen, zero-two-three-eight. Resolution authorizing an Osteoarthritis Action Alliance grant for the senior center. Resolve that the Groton Senior Center is authorized to apply for a grant in the amount of five thousand dollars from the Osteoarthritis Action Alliance to support the arthritis foundation's Walk With Ease program conducted at the senior center. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Yes, Dean?
I didn't ask it with the last one, because I knew about it, but this one, I, standard question, is there anything matching from the town? It's gonna be?
My understanding is no, there's none.
Okay, so it's purely an application. Okay, would there be any, what if we got the grant, would there be, the senior center got the grant, would there be any further commitment from the town required in a future year, for example?
No, my understanding is no.
Okay, thank you.
If that changes, I, I will certainly bring it up, and I'm pretty confident.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that passes six to zero to zero. I'm gonna move we suspend the town council rule seven, be to consider an act upon. Twenty seventeen-0244 agreement with Oddfellows Home of Connecticut. I'm moving that we suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that passes six to zero to zero. Harry, you wanna do zero-two-four-four?
Sure. Um, this is zero-two-four-four. Resolution authorizing an agreement with Oddfellows Home of Connecticut Incorporated. Whereas Oddfellows Home of Connecticut Incorporated, Oddfellows in parentheses, is the owner of real and personal property located at two thirty-five Lester Town Road, Groton, Connecticut. And whereas Oddfellows commenced a tax appeal lawsuit against the town of Groton claiming tax exemptions applied and contesting the town's valuation and taxation of its property with respect to the October one, two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen grand list. And whereas Oddfellows and the town of Groton have been engaged in discussions concerning an agreement that would require Oddfellows to pay a pilot payment in lieu of taxes commencing with the October one, two thousand fifteen grand list and continuing through and including the October one, two thousand twenty-five grand list. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes the town attorney to finalize negotiations with Oddfellows regarding the pilot agreement, and further authorizes the town manager, John Burke, to execute such agreement on behalf of the town of Groton. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? I just want to say, I think there's been some discussion about, vocally about this agreement and with Oddfellows, and because it's in the final of negotiation, John, obviously we can't, we can't discuss.
Right.
The negotiation, but, um, we're, we are avoiding a lawsuit, getting out of a lawsuit, and, um, and, uh, there was no guaranteed money. Should we have stayed in the lawsuit? So, um, we're doing what we think is best for the town.
Burning the hand over.
Yes. So, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that passes six to zero to zero.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move suspension of rural town council rule seven, be to consider an act upon American Library Association Ready-to-Code Grant.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? Seeing that all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The rules are suspended.
That's just a technical question. So if we suspend it, let me act before, isn't it still suspended and?
I don't know. No, I think it's.
That particular item.
Okay, so we have to suspend it every time we do it?
Because he's suspending it to take up this issue.
I'm just.
Better practice.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Twenty seventeen-0245. Resolution authorizing the town manager is designate to accept grant funding from the American, American Library Association.
Yeah.
To promote computational thinking and computer science at the Groton Public Library. Whereas the American Library Association is offering grant funding sponsored by Google as a third phase of their Ready-to-Code initiative. And whereas funds would be used to develop computer coding and computational thinking programs for youth. And whereas the Groton Public Library is one of twenty-five libraries in the country selected to participate in the program, therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council hereby authorize the town manager or his designate to accept grant funding in the amount of six thousand dollars from the American Library Association to acquire computer science resources useful for designing and implementing youth computer science programming in the Groton Public Library. I so move. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing that all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that passes six to zero to zero. Just have one quick question before we adjourn. Oh, go ahead. Harry, go.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we also suspend the rules to consider, uh, appointments to the permanent school building committee. As I stated, in October third, we, we interviewed three people, thinking the fourth person was gonna be interviewed also for three positions, while the fourth person has withdrawn their name. We've interviewed three people last month, um, for the three positions. And also to consider, um, a, a reappointments of, of, of three people that we discussed tonight at our rules committee. This is an important, um, committee. Um, you know, we're, we're hot on building these new schools, and we need the permanent school building committee fully staffed. So I'd like to move we suspend the rules to consider those.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor suspending the rules say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that passes six to zero to zero. Go ahead, Harry.
So I'm moving, uh, the appointment of, um, the three people recommended by the, by the appointments, uh, committee. Christina Post, Douglas Manfred, Jamie Giordano. And I could add the same motion, the reappointments too. And, and the reappointments of, uh, of three folks, Robert Austin LaFrance, Michael Doyle, and David Russell. And I move that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that passes six to zero to zero.
Thank you.
One question. So, John, we have a meeting next Tuesday. And then the regular council meeting for that wouldn't be until the new council is instilled.
Right.
So, um, we haven't talked about the agenda for next Tuesday, but I'm wondering if it wouldn't be a bad idea to maybe have a session, if they wanted to, with the new council, just to go over things that are out there. But maybe we can make that offer, and if, if they wanted to, they could, and if not. Yeah, just to, I mean, to, to hand over all of the things that are, that, that John's been working on, referrals and things are there. They have a idea of what's.
A truck.
For the transition to be a little bit smoother. Did you want to say something, Dean?
Yeah, uh, we've spoken, um, a bit, I can't remember when now, it all blends together. This has been an ongoing issue. This is Fire District desire to use, started with the Mystic Fire District, but there's some other districts as well, that would, I'd like to use the old Scarra Building as a transfer station, or just north of this transfer station. And I spoke with Deputy Chief Manfredi about this, and I said, "Great, we'll put it on an agenda coming up." He says, "I don't have quite enough time to put my presentation together." I did warn him that there may be a couple of hiccups from public works. So he said, "Can I have the twenty-eighth, your cow meeting on the twenty-eighth?" As the date. That would be the last cow meeting that we have. And traditionally, we don't have a cow when a new council comes in, even if it's substantially the same people. But I leave that, leave that to you. He's, the Mystic Fire District is set to come in on the twenty-eighth. If it's something different, if we want to put that off, we should let them know, but, yeah.
And just to let you know, Joe's Australia is working with them as well, there's others trying to pinpoint a good location. There are some issues with where they're looking at, but Joe's working with them, so let me touch base with Joe and see where we're at on that.
And maybe you could reach out, or, you know, whoever could reach out to the new council and see if they're interested, if not, we can figure out the agenda.
What I didn't want to do is I didn't want to not have a meeting and surprise the Fire District when they thought that there was gonna be.
I'll take care of it. I'll figure it out.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? All right.
Move we adjourn?
Second.
We adjourn?